Thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Claire Gail Pharoah. I'm standing next to you, so I can tell you that we're both co-presidents of the West Hempstead Elementary PTA. Together with PTSA and SEPTA, I'd like to welcome you all to the candidates and I'd like to welcome all the candidates and residents of West Hempstead to our 2018 Candidates Forum for the West Hempstead School Board. I'd like to introduce the candidates. On the end there is Byron Cole, Carol Dolan, Sarah Esses, Perry Fogg, Toni Katrikakis. So I'd just like to point out a few things. I was just informed that we're not permitted to videotape, so a couple of people have called me this past week, and I have told them no, but we are permitted to videotape this form, so if you wish to do that, I'd only be able to do so. PTA bylaws clearly state that the PTA Association shall be nonpartisan. Nonpartisan means PTA cannot support or endorse any candidate for the school board. This is responsive to the requirements of federal law. If we ought to retain tax exempt status, experience teaches us that our freedom of action and effectiveness on behalf of the children and youth would be hindered, not helped by partisan involvement. PTA is concerned with principles and issues, not with parties or persons. So, I know many of you have already helped yourself, but if you need more, please help yourself to the candidates' biographies. And also, there are white index cards at the table on the side over there for you to write your questions to the candidates. You need not to put your name on the card. During the question and answer period, the cards will be collected by PTA members and submitted to this evening's moderator. We ask that you don't get up and cross over, because it gets very distracting, so just play one of those down and we'll get free. If you want to hand the cards over down to the middle aisle, that would be great. Having the side aisle, sorry. Please, only one question per card, and if you need additional cards, please let us know. Please note, no written statement or comment in the chat can or will be distributed after this forum. I'd like to thank and introduce Sarah Hennessy from Nassau Region PTA, who will be our moderator. And Sonya Dixon, who's sitting down over there, who will be our trustee. Thank you to the both of you, and I please now return the forum over to Sarah.
Thank you very much. I would like to thank the West Hempstead PTAs for choosing Nassau Region PTA to conduct the Candidates Forum for you. As you've learned, Sonya Dixon is our timekeeper, and she'll be sitting in the front row so that each and every one of the candidates can clearly see her and the time remaining that they have to answer the questions. So you may not be able to see that, but that's where she is and why. I am going to be sitting near to the side so that you can have the best view possible of the candidates, and so that they can also see me when I ask the questions. Each candidate will have three minutes for their opening statement. We will start in the order in which the candidates are seated, starting with Byron Cole. Each candidate will then follow the opening, have two minutes for their answers to the questions that you have provided. And that will, the questions will rotate, so according to the seating order, starting with the second candidate, which would be Carol Dolan. And then after each question, we'll continue to rotate through the order. Each candidate will be allowed to answer the question, or given the time to answer the question. The closing statements, the candidate will start the closing statement in the opposite order of the opening statements, and I'm sorry I neglected to tell each of you that when I spoke with you. So the closing statements will begin with Andrea Shinzado. Oh, I'll try to speak louder, sorry about that. I didn't want to yell into everybody's ears, but I'll be easy answers of that. The last question, well, the order of questions will continue until the last question will be read at nine o'clock. The West Hempstead PTAs had agreed, because there were so many people still coming in at 7:30, to allow for a few extra minutes for everybody, so I hope that that's okay for you. So the last question will be read at nine o'clock. That'll give everybody time to answer it, and then everybody to answer, speak to you about their closing statements, and should have you out of here at 9:30 for any minute. So thank you very much. If you're all ready, I would like to start with our opening statements. Byers?
Good evening. Good evening, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Yes, you want to? Good evening, it's great to see everyone. Thank you to the PTA for hosting us tonight. Wonderful to see all you folks come out and show us that we've got a dynamic community, and glad to see you all here. My name is Byers Cole. I've been living in West Hempstead for 13 years. I have three children, one in the private schools at Holy Trinity, and two in the public schools here at West Hempstead Middle School. So some people refer to my family as a mixed family. So I, and I'm running for a school board for a couple of different reasons. One, I believe in public service, and my mother was a high school English teacher, so I believe in public education. So you put those two things together, plus the fact that I had a very profound high school experience. My high school experience, when we personally set me on my professional path. And I think, like many parents, we want our children to have the same type of experiences. And so I want that for my children and for all of our children. So while I'm on the board, there are three things, or four things really, that I hope to accomplish this year. And I'm currently on the board, by the way, as an interim, and so I am seated on the board currently. My number one objective, and I think for us in terms of the goal, is, this is continued academic improvement. If you look at the high school scorecards, and some of the academic achievements in the school and the district the last couple of years, we've seen some marked improvement. We need to be, have laser focus on our continued academic excellence. So excellence is really, is a key focus for us. Number two, to continue to expand and grow our academic programs. So that's not only around science, and math, and English, and technology, and core to core academics, but also for extracurricular things, such as music, drama, athletics, et cetera, so that we are raising well-rounded students and well-rounded citizens. And three, fiscal responsibility. We work with very tight budgets here in West Hempstead, and fiscal prudence is going to be, and will continue to be, a top priority for us in the district. I'm very proud that our school budget is only going up 1.9% this year, and we work very hard on that. So, and that with the execution of our school bond is going to be really of paramount importance for us over the coming years. And finally, as a citizen and as a parent, and as a mixed family, I can be a voice for the community and a representative of the community, not only of public school children, but also of private school children. Because I understand the unique challenges and issues that private school parents and families face, as well as the public school parents. So I thank you very much for coming out tonight, and I hope that you'll consider voting for me on May 15th. Thank you very much.
My name is Carol Dolan, and I know what it's like to make important decisions about our child and our children's education. They are the most important gift that is given to us in this life. I'm a mother, and I understand what it's like to have to decide who's the most qualified candidate, because that decision, that important decision about who's most qualified will affect our children's education. I've made important decisions that impact children's lives every day for the last 36 years, as a mother, as a special ed teacher, working with public schools on Long Island and in the city, developing plans that drive the education of individual students to a successful outcomes. I'm working with my current school boards in a professional role. I have a record of success with my own children, with my students, and working with boards. I want to use the skills that I have developed over a long career, and bring these very particular skills to improve our children's education. If I have the privilege to serve on the school board, I want to do many things, like expand school programs, by spending wisely, and working with parents like you, to transform a good school into a great school. I am a doer. I don't want to be the person that sits around with friends and just complains about what is wrong. I want to do what's right for you and for your children. I would like to see higher standards, more parent involvement, and more community involvement. There are a lot of parents out there, moms like myself, fathers, brothers, sisters, who want to help. I would encourage that community involvement, and force it to make better for our children and for our district. It would be great to see more extracurricular programs and continuing education courses for people who live in the community. New skills are important for the workforce that's getting a little older, and I guess I'm talking about myself. Or even fun activities that brings the community closer, because I believe in united people and not divided ones. I would make the school a beacon of our community that attracts new families, because we have the best school in Nassau County, not just another good school, the best school. A school that everyone is proud of and would want to go to, to tell their friends about. I know it might sound hard, I know it's going to be not happen overnight, but I think the idea should be in everyone's mind. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Esses. I moved to West Hempstead about a year and a half ago from Queens, New York. What I felt lacking in Queens was the sense of community. And when I moved to West Hempstead, I found an amazing community, a cohesive community, a community that really cares about their children and about their citizens. I feel for myself that it's one of my life's goals to be serving the community. And I feel that my best qualities are my experience in education. I feel that my experience will be able to serve my community to the best of my abilities. I'm a public school teacher in the Bronx. I've been teaching for over 20 years. I teach second grade. All of my students come from other countries and speak other languages. I understand that in West Hempstead, there's a growing population of ELL students, and I want to ensure that their families feel welcome to the community, and that we offer assistance to new families entering the community, helping them navigate through the system, navigate through just coming to a new country, a new language. I care deeply about special ed education services, and I want to ensure that all children get the services that they need. Part of my role in school is not only as a teacher, but I do professional development, I do staff development. I've written several grants for my school, as we've received over thousands of dollars in programs that bring art, dance, music, science to our school. And I feel that my abilities is to think outside the box, in terms of earning extra income for your school, and I feel that that's what I will bring to the table if I'm on the board. Thank you.
I am Perry Fogg. I have 51 years here in this community. I love West Hempstead, have not moved out, moved down the block with my parents. Bought a house in 1995, and plan on being in Fort Wyman, and 51 years is now long ago. Picking back off what Byron says, he's a mixed family, well, I think I'm a senior family, because I have five children, and all of them graduate high school. Four of them graduate from this school, West Hempstead, our school district. And my youngest child, we decided to go to the pro-uni route. He left in the eighth grade and went to St. Anthony's. A little far out, but we thought that was a good choice for us. From that time on, we, he moved to Morgan-on-Lucrent, and graduated there with honors, and went on to a post-grad school. The post-grad school is in New Hampshire. We decided, because he graduated a year early, he graduated a year early, that we felt that he needed an extra year, not academically, but because of maturity and body, and he's also a football player. Serving our community has been one of the things that's been instilled in our lives since we were young, growing up as a Cub Scout and a Boy Scout. We always thought about giving back, that's something that was drilled into my, our being, my mother and my father. My mom passed away in 2011, and I did what she wanted me to do, because she said, "Perry, get involved." And I did. That following year, I did everything. I joined the Rotary Club, I was on the Strategic Planning Council for West Hempstead. I joined the 100 Black Men. I did everything I could, and I also ran for board. What I like to do is give my experience in serving this community, we have two local businesses here, I'm a tailor, and we also, I'm also an assistant provider, daycare provider. And I've been serving our kids here for 19 years, helping them get acclimated into kindergarten, teaching them how to read, write, before they get to kindergarten, they know how to read, write, their math, they know their telephone number, they know their mother and father's names and their addresses. Those things are very, very important. I like to continue that with our school district. Listen, we have a great community. I don't know if my parents knew what they were doing when they moved here, but getting off exit 17 and being able to go to and from the city, or jumping on the, getting to the airport so close, it's unbelievable. I would like to give my experiences and my services to this community of which I love. Thank you very much.
My name is Toni Katrikakis. I grew up in Woodside, Queens, and moved here with my wife and three children about 11 years ago. We chose West Hempstead because there is such a diverse group of people here, with such great community pride. My oldest son graduated from West Hempstead High School about five years ago. My daughter's currently in the seventh grade in the West Hempstead Middle School with honors, and my son's in fourth grade in George Washington. I also send my children to Greek school every Monday night, not because I like to torture them, but due to the fact that I think it is important for every child to know their background and heritage. It's what makes us the people we are today. I am a local 628 Dean's School veteran, and I've been doing that now for almost 11 years. The reason why I excel so much at my job is because of my fine muscles and my diligent and strong work ethic. No matter how hard or difficult the situation may be, I will always do my best to try to get the best possible outcome for everyone. Living here in West Hempstead, I too have developed a sense of community pride and have felt at home. I have also been a big supporter of this community, and tried to help wherever I could. I've helped coach youth boys baseball, youth girls softball, and have currently been coaching the West Hempstead Boys Youth Football League for six years now. I've been president and the town representative for it for the last three. I decided to run for school board because we have all witnessed some big improvements in our schools, and would like to help further this progress. I would hate to see all of this hard work lost because of lack of community involvement. I believe a school board member must be responsive and receptive to parents, staff, teachers, students, and the community. I believe teachers and schools should have all the best possible tools they can to help our children succeed in achieving their goals, while still trying to be fiscally responsible. It is not an easy challenge or task, but it's definitely one that I'm prepared to handle. I've sat where you all are sitting today, and I've asked myself the same questions that you guys are asking yourselves. But today, I'm sitting on the opposite side of this table, looking for your voices to be heard, and have our questions answered. If given the chance, I will do my best to give a new perspective on matters, as well as working cohesively with a wonderful board to give our children a brighter future. Please, I hope to see you all on May 15th, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
My name is Andrea Shinzado. I have lived here with my husband for the past 17 years. We have two children that currently use our public schools. I was elected to the Board of Education in 2015, and I currently serve as the Board Vice President. In the three years I've been a school board trustee, I can honestly say, the district has made vast improvements in all areas, academically, structurally, and professionally. We hired a new superintendent who brought cohesion for forward progress into our community. Our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum has created many new and innovative opportunities for our students and our teaching staff. We created and passed a bond that even in its early stage, has made a big impact on the facility. Our yearly budgets have remained under the New York State Tax Cap. This year's operating budget was crafted at just under $2, at 1.97 to be exact. Every year, our independent auditors have said we are fiscally responsible and find no faults in our spending, budgeting, or auditing practices. And we consistently budget so accurately that we close out the year almost exactly where we expected to be. I take great pride in my position. I understand that my number one priority is always what's best for the students that we serve. But more than that, I have a responsibility to their parents and to all the West Hempstead residents. My husband works for the Electrical Union, and I'm a stay-at-home mom. We need that decision when our two children are young, to always have a parent home for them for as long as they need. Because we have chosen to raise our children this way, we have to make sacrifices in order to make ends meet and keep our family dynamic intact. So I am especially sensitive to the financial climate of our district, because I know how much it affects us all. I could never frivolously spend money at home, even though I would like to, and I would never be okay with doing it as a trustee either. It's a big responsibility, and one I do not take lightly. I am seeking reelection, because I would like to see through what we've accomplished so far. I'd like to see our bond work completed, I would like to see our district take its new shape with the restructuring of our elementary system. My goal, and that of my fellow trustees, is to make West Hempstead a great place to live, and educate the kids in our community to the best of our ability. I believe West Hempstead deserves a school board that is dedicated and invested in the success of our district, because a successful and thriving school district is the cornerstone for a vibrant community. I love living in this town and raising my two children here. It's been an honor to volunteer in my community, so I just want to say thank you all for coming out to get educated, and thank you to the PTA for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for your opening comments. Our first question will start with Carol. What do you see as a major challenge the school district is facing, and how would you implement a solution? I'm sorry. With the hum from the refrigerators and coolers, it's hard to hear each of you, so if you could be sure to speak closely, I'll do the same. Thank you. Would you like me to repeat the question? What do you see as a major challenge for the school district, that the school district is facing, and how would you implement a solution?
Well, I think that we have more children, more diverse children coming into the district, and I just want to make sure that the programs that we're providing meet the needs of all the students. And working with the teachers, and working with the parents, and educating, and giving parents extra help in this school also, would maybe increase scores a little bit more.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol. Sarah, would you like me to repeat the question?
Okay, so, so for the challenges for our school district, I understand that there's a lot of new students coming in, that English is not their first language, and we really need to address those needs. I feel that having parent workshops, holding English classes in the evenings, helping children learn the language, maybe designing classes that have a co-teacher model, where they have a general education teacher, and then a licensed ELL teacher with the teacher, with the class, and they can push in a couple of periods and then rotate. I think that's really helpful. I think there's a growing need for special education services, and we need to address that as well, providing more providers, such as OT, psychologists, licensed special education teachers to address those needs. I think also, like, this is facing every district in our country, is that I feel that a lot of children are, they're being distracted by video games, by electronics, and we really need to do a really good job in trying to, to take their attentions away from the electronics and offer more extracurricular activities, more arts, more music, more sports. Get them more involved in outside activities.
Thank you, Sarah. Perry?
With the changing dynamics that we have here, the demographics, we see a large influx of bilinguals, we also see where...
Do you speak up, please?
Sure, sorry about that.
Do not hear you.
Okay. Can you hear me now? I think that we have a strong dynamic where the demographics have changed, so we need programs in which we can address those issues where our children, as far as language is concerned. If we had more programs to assist kids in their academics, support the teachers if they're able to do that, I believe that's where we have a major problem, a challenge. And I would support any kind of program that would give those students the help they need.
Thank you very much, Perry.
For me, it would honestly be community involvement. Until tonight, I've gone to board meetings, PTA meetings, PTSA meetings, and if I've seen more than 10 community members in the room, it's probably been a lot. So tonight, being that everybody has come out, is probably the most that I've seen anyone get involved. And in order to help our children succeed in anything they're doing, we need to be involved. So for me, I know it's hard to say, "I want to do this, and I want to do that," and make time for things, but unless we do take the time to get involved with our children, with our schools, talk to the teachers, and see where our children are, we don't give them much of a chance of trying to succeed. So, and I believe that the change starts here, and it starts with me. Thank you.
So I think that one of the major challenges that faces any school district, but especially West Hempstead School District, is our financial constraints. The state constantly hands down mandates that we have to fund. They are mandated that we have to implement them, but they are not mandated to pay for them. That is something that the West Hempstead School District has to pay for. And it is a constant source of challenge for our business office to provide a cohesive, comprehensive plan for our students under a formula that is not really accurate to our wealth ratio. We are viewed as a wealthy district by New York State, and I don't think that that formula is really fair indication of where we, yeah, of where we stand. So financial challenges is one of our biggest, biggest, financial constraints is one of our biggest challenges. What we can do to implement a solution is what we did this year, we spoke to Senator Kaminsky and Assemblyman Ra, and we really advocate for West Hempstead, not as a general district, but as a specific district. We have a very high free and reduced lunch rate, and that's something that really the state should take a look at when they are handing down our state aid. And because we did have these conversations, it actually did result in an increase in state aid at the very last minute when the governor passed his vote. So any amount helps, and I feel that that helps in that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ditto what everybody said. I will say, we've got several challenges. Community spirit certainly is one of them, there's no question, and community involvement. And as I said, it's great to see everyone here tonight, this is fantastic. I wish we saw this at our school board meetings on a regular basis. That's one. Number two, our financial constraints. And we are, we are measured as being...
And we are, we are measured as being a more wealthy community of New York State than Franklin Square, believe it or not. So, and we have over 40%, I don't know, 40% of our students in our public schools are on reduced or free lunches. So those are children that are falling below the poverty line. So that's, those are some of the things that we're dealing with. Plus, we have, as my children, going to private schools, we have a split community, about a third of our children go to, about two-thirds of our kids go to private schools. So we're fragmented. So a lot of folks that are not involved in the public schools don't understand some of the unique challenges that we face as a public school. Now, the ELL or ENL program is something that we have put an awful lot of emphasis on. And I will point out that last year, we saw over a 10% increase in our ENL program from year over year. So if you look at the scorecard, you will see that we are moving in the right direction there. Also, our ENL teacher, I hope I'm getting those acronyms right. Our ENL teacher was just honored, was just honored as, for her achievements in that area in terms of being a leader professionally and what we're doing within our community. So all of these things are challenges that we take seriously as a community and as a board. So there are many challenges, so it's hard to narrow it down to one, but thank you for the question, and...
Thank you, Brian. Our second question will begin with Sarah. And it is, "Our public school population is shrinking and down over 30% for the past 10 years. Why are you the person that can help?"
So, our population is shrinking. I understand that some people are moving out of West Hempstead, perhaps they're going to retire, and I understand that some people are opting for parochial schools and private schools. I feel that I can help build our school because I do have a lot of experience. I have over 20 years' experience teaching public school. I have experience implementing innovative programs in my school at zero cost. I've brought cooking programs to our school, music programs, and I've found ways for other people to fund these programs. And I feel that with my experience, that I can help the school district in that way.
Thank you, Sarah. Perry?
Well, I think that the bond that we just passed is a great start for us to increase our enrollment. I noticed that the football field has been changed, we've got great advances there, and I'm a sports guy, so I know that a lot of students come to our school because of sports, and I'm hoping to actually help to push that as well. The programs that we have to offer, special programs, we can actually increase that in order to get new attendance to drive that up. I think that we have, we're moving in the right direction, and I would just want to piggyback off of that and try to push it a little bit further.
Thank you, Perry. Tony?
Public school attendance could possibly have dropped, but I think if we implement and hire the right teachers and push towards giving our children more of what they need as far as tools. And now with the whole restructuring, we've had, restructuring gives teachers more chances to collaborate with children, and all children now are, instead of being separated by communities, are separated by grades. So all grades between 1 to 3 are going to be in Cornwell, 4 to 6 at GW. So teachers now have more time to also help concentrate on children and help them further their progress, which, when the numbers eventually double up, it'll show, statistics will show. And also, by getting out there and talking to community members and showing them what we're doing, where the children are achieving. The whole football field, like Perry said, was redone. Science labs are being redone. There's a lot going on here that still has not taken an effect. There's a lot of electives that are going to be here, some more AP classes. There's a lot that we have not talked about and just needs to be seen. And the more we do spread the word throughout the community and make people aware of what is going on, I think that's the best way to get children back into the public schools and put our emphasis here. Thank you.
So if our public school population is shrinking, as a public school parent, you would have to wonder why. And I think that as a board, we've discussed that we have to be as competitive as possible. Not only do we have to be competitive as possible, but we have to get that message out there. And that's something that I think we're struggling with a little bit, and we know that it's an area that we have to work on. So this year, we went to Island Park, and we had a meeting with Board of Ed in Island Park to let them know about the new developments that are happening in West Hempstead, because there's a lot of movement here. I can say, for a little bit, we were a little stagnant, and I don't feel that way anymore. So I think it's our job as Board of Education members to tout the stuff that's happening within our walls, because if we don't tout it, nobody else will know what's going on. The bond was touched on, that's a huge thing, but there's improvements inside that people wouldn't know. And the grass is always greener unless you know what's going on in the buildings. We are having updated science lab, we're having updated home and careers rooms, but our courses are where we really want to focus our attention. We are adding electives, we are revamping our AP, we are seeing a huge spike in our test scores because of that. We have new directors, we have a Director of STEAM, which is something that is new that we didn't have before, and it's about telling everybody, telling our neighbors and our community members the great things that are going on here, and that's something we need to work on.